Yeah, I told him I couldn't see the little one. And I didn't want to hold this on.
Definitely changes the way we look at it.
You will see proof of that. So you're playing it to people. Your husband was confused. She was bouncing around while calling him to play.
Not anymore.
But she's still.
All right, let's call the meeting to order. Town Council Regular Meeting of the Town of Moncks Corner, Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. Our invocation will be delivered by Darian Jamelle Jones, Pastor of the Moncks Corner AME Church.
Good evening. Here are the words of the Prophet Jeremiah, recorded in Jeremiah 29. Thus says the Lord of hosts, the God of Israel, to the exiles whom I have sent in exile, "Build houses and live in them; plant gardens and eat what they produce; take wives and have sons and daughters; take wives for your sons, and give daughters into marriage, that they may bear sons and daughters. Multiply there; do not decrease; but seek the welfare of the city, and pray to the Lord on its behalf. From the welfare of the city you will find welfare." Let us pray. Gracious God, we are grateful for your love, your grace, and your mercy that you extend to us always. Lord, today we pray for the welfare of the city, the town of Moncks Corner. We pray for all the citizens, we pray for the town's leadership, for the public servants. Lord, in all the things that we do, you be glorified. Lead us with love, compassion, and wisdom. This is our prayer, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, thank you. Pledge of Allegiance, Latory, please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a special presentation, a very special proclamation honoring Municipal Judge Shaheena Bennett, incoming president of the South Carolina Bar Association. In honor of Municipal Judge Shaheena R. Bennett for her recent appointment as president of the South Carolina Bar Association, whereas the Town of Moncks Corner takes great pride in recognizing and celebrating the achievements of its esteemed citizens, and whereas Municipal Judge Bennett has exemplified unwavering dedication, integrity, and commitment to justice throughout her distinguished career, and whereas her recent appointment as president of the South Carolina Bar Association stands as a testament to her exceptional legal acumen, leadership qualities, and esteemed reputation within the legal community. And whereas Municipal Judge Bennett's tenure as president of the South Carolina Bar Association promises to bring about positive change, progress, and advancements in the legal profession, further enhancing the legal landscape within our state. And whereas her passion for justice, tireless advocacy, and steadfast devotion to upholding the rule of law have earned her the admiration, respect, and gratitude of her colleagues, peers, and the citizens of the Town of Moncks Corner. Now therefore I, Thomas J. Hamilton, Mayor of the Town of Moncks Corner, do hereby proclaim that Municipal Judge Shaheena Bennett be honored and celebrated for her remarkable achievements and for bringing distinction to our community through her exemplary service to the legal profession. In witness whereof, I have here on two set my hand and cause the sale of Town of Moncks Corner affixed 18, day of June 2024. We'll come up here and.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate that. To our distinguished Town Council members, thank you all very much. To our honorable mayor, I appreciate you, thank you. To our time machine, Mr. Lord, thank you, sir. To our distinguished attorney, Rodden, I thank you, sir. And I thank all of the wonderful staff members of the Town of Moncks Corner. Chief Young, I see you there, thank you, sir. Our fire chief, thank you, sir. I don't want to forget anyone standing around. But I just want to say that this is indeed a significant honor to our town, and I'm so very pleased and proud to walk this walk. Being a lawyer and being a judge and being an advocate for the community is a sincere passion of mine. I love the Town of Moncks Corner, and as I travel throughout the state, acknowledging what the town has done and what folks in other places can do with the town as the leader in our community, I think it's very important that we acknowledge ourselves. Give yourselves a pat on the back, because this community is getting rave reviews around the state. And as the new bar, South Carolina Bar President, I'm always talking you up, I'm always promoting you, and I'm always acknowledging our distinguished members. So I appreciate you all, this is so significant to me, and I hope that I can live up to what this really means to our town. Thank you so much.
All right, I'm gonna do approval of minutes for the regular meetings, May 21st, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Settled, moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, mayor's report. Another busy month. On Thursday, May 23rd, attended the ribbon cutting for Big Mike's Ice Cream Shop. Mayor Pro Tim Dennis, Councilmember Lloyd, and Councilmember Law were also in attendance. Also on May 23rd, attended the Berkeley High School Junior Firefighters Graduation. Councilman Law was was present. Monday, May 27th, attended the Memorial Day Service at the Berkeley County Veterans Memorial Monument. Thursday, May 30th, I toured the Berkeley County Welcome Center at the Nesbit House. It was their one-year anniversary of being open. Friday, May 31st, attended the Walmart ribbon cutting for their newly renovated store. Saturday, June 1st, attended the 2024 Tri-County Orange Walk. Berkeley County Sheriff's Office, Moncks Corner Police Department, and Goose Creek Police Department partnered with the Bradley Blake Foundation. Monday, June 3rd, attended the Moncks Corner Baptist Soup Kitchen ribbon cutting ceremony. And June 7th, attended the Jazz and Art Show in the Park. The event was held at Unity Park on Main Street. Local artists displayed their work, and music was provided by the Berkeley High School Jazz Ensemble. Friday, June 7th, I had the opportunity to tour the Kennedy Center. Monday, June 10th, the Moncks Corner Fire Department and Moncks Corner Police Department sponsored the Battle of the Badges. The American Red Cross collected 27 units of blood. Tuesday, June 11th, I toured the Berkeley County Mental Health Center and Berkeley citizens and their work center. Just a lot of the the young people and older people that are at the work center are also participants for our Miracle League, and it was really good to see them in an atmosphere where they could work and 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 contribute back to society. Thursday, June 13th, attended the Belltone Ribbon Cutting. Councilmember Latory Lloyd and Mayor Pro Tim David Dennis and staff also attended. The week of June 10th through the 14th, the police and recreation departments held their summer camps. I was invited to go with the police department to the water park on Friday. I volunteered to participate in the dunk tank. The children had a great time dunking the mayor alongside with the chief of police. I really want to commend our police department, our recreation staff. You know, they do such a great job with these kids. And to see 100 kids at a water park with our officers out there keeping them on a schedule, it was truly amazing. Finally, on Sunday, June 16th, I attended the Juneteenth Festival at Kitfield Recreation Center. Future events, the town will hold their annual 4th of July Celebration from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Moncks Corner Regional Recreation Complex. The Custom Four and Friends will be playing along with full code entertainment. There will be food trucks, vendors, children's activities, fireworks, and more. As always, a lot of citizens reached out on email, text, and phone calls, and I answered them all. Go to the administrator's report, Mr. Lord.
Mayor and council, I've got two things for you this evening. First, I'd like to add on to, you know, the accomplishments of Judge Bennett. Recently, the court installed a virtual court system, which is a really good achievement. It's a video conferencing system that allows them to hold court with inmates at the jail without having to transport them. It's got full motion video, does transcript, and even has translators available to the system. And it also allows the judge to hold court if she can't be here and the associate judge can't be here for any reason. So it really increases the ability to be able to serve all those needs and reduces our need to be able to have to transport prisoners. So really a great accomplishment. And, you know, another another feather in Judge Bennett's cap. And thanks to the court staff and Mr. Abrahams who saw it done. So I just want to let you know that that system is now in place. And I'd also like to recognize Chief Gass. He wants to tell you about a recognition that the fire department's received.
All right. Good afternoon, good evening, mayor, council, citizens. Friday, we had the honor of going to Myrtle Beach to the South Carolina State Firefighters Association Conference. That's a four-day conference, there's a lot of training goes on during the conference. One of the other events, though, is they give out the Fire Safe South Carolina designation to communities that have completed. And this is just part of it, but this little sign that's got the official logo on it, gave us a nice certificate. But the main thing is that we got the recognition to get it. Shows that we've accomplished a number of things. A lot of this is our things that we've already been doing, but we didn't do it in an organized fashion, and we didn't necessarily do it all every year. Because what it does, Fire Safe is supposed to bring the fire departments and other community organizations together to promote fire and home safety to the citizens of the state. The goal is to reduce, of course, in the name, reduce home fires, which reduces the exposure of citizens and firefighters to the dangers of a of a house fire. Part of it is there's a number of classes that you have to get done. And we would do them, the classes that are in this are the related to public safety or public education, not public safety, but public education, fire safety, just general home safety. But you've got to do a certain number of them within your department. Not everybody has to go to all of them, but it just pushes us to be a little bit better. That particular goal is to make sure that everybody in the department is better trained. So you rotate these classes, you know, it encourages you to rotate these classes through all your people and make sure at some point in their career, they get all this stuff, and it makes them better stewards to the community. And as long as our people are better stewards, that makes the department better. It's a partnership, we have a partnership. One of the requirements is to form partnership with a local or with local businesses. One of the organizations that we've partnered with is, I want to make sure I call it right, Communities Hope Impact Center, which is over in the Wall Street area. What our folks did, we went out, they they do a lot of things in the community as far as food giveaways. I think they do things for infants, diapers, and needs that you have for babies. But they deal with people all the way from infants to seniors. And we went over and put together a number of raised beds for them to have the community garden over there and help fill them and get them started. So it's a it's a good program, I'm proud that we were able to get it done. If you see anything online, you won't see me probably, you'll see my three people, because I did some work in the in the front end, did a little bit of work in the back end, and I thought that the folks that went across the stage should be the ones that that were told the line. So our new C R R captain, my administrative assistant, and one of our engineers who has gotten really involved in the community risk reduction, they accepted the awards, did all the handshaking. And I'm proud of them. Like I say, a lot of this stuff, you know, they talk about partnerships with the community. I feel like the fire department for years has had a good relationship with the community. And all this, what this has done is kind of pulled it together and encourages us to keep it up. So.
Name the three people that that spearheaded it for us.
Cory Denny, Lisa Beavers, and Mackenzie Coe.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, that concludes my report, but I can answer any questions you or council may have.
Okay, move on to new business. We have a resolution authorizing 2024 lease purchase intersection improvements at Fox Bank Boulevard and Highway 52, Jeff?
Yes, sir. So as you are familiar, we have an agreement with a developer of Fox Bank Commercial to install the traffic signal at Fox Bank Boulevard and Highway 52. What this is, is the borrowing instrument by which they are committed to pay the debt on to be able to get that done. So it was put out. 10 banks, I believe, were reached out to, three of them responded, and the lowest interest rate was at 5.53% with South State Bank. So if council will adopt the resolution, then we can get this project started.
Anyone have any questions?
Jeff, can you go over just a little bit for the public record on why we're doing this?
Yes, sir. So the the project is $1.6 million. And for us to be able to accomplish it, per our agreement with the developer, they are responsible for paying the cost of installing the light. We are doing the borrowing, and they are paying for the payments on it. And they have, we have instruments in place where it's guaranteed. So they will always have to make the payments, and if they don't, we can call their assets to make those payments.
And do we have a list of those assets as to what they are that we can call upon?
Yes, sir.
Now, is this a straight, they're just paying the loan on this amount?
So the the amount that they pay is reduced by the amount of taxes we receive off of the property. So the the annual payment's $285,000. If we receive $100,000 in property taxes on the property, then they will pay the balance of 185,000. So either way, either they're paying us through the property tax or they're paying us directly.
But as far as what they're paying us, it's it's basically the 5.53 percentage rate.
That includes the principal and the debt service.
Got it, thank you.
Any other? Do I have a motion?
Settled.
Settled.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Consideration Engineering Firms for Indefinite Delivery Contracts, Jeff?
Yes, sir. So every few years, the town solicits qualifications from firms interested in doing work for the town. And we break this into different categories, site work, designing playgrounds and parks, stormwater reviews, reviewing these stormwater plans that were received, because we are a delegated authority from DEHEC to be able to do that. Our stormwater mapping, and then any like roadway design, intersection design, the intersection that we just approved the financing on, they're the the firm that we would engage would be the firm that designed it. Of course, it's already been designed, but that's an example of how it would be in the future. So we received 10 submittals, and then those 10 submittals, staff went through and scored, narrowed it down to five, invited those five in for interviews, and then based on those interviews, has the recommendation in front of you. And the way it's intended is, for most of these categories, there's a one, two, three. And so the the first firm on the list is who we would go to and say, we have a project, we need an engineering firm, send us a work order based on an existing indefinite delivery contract. And so the the contract would have all the terms in it. And then so the work order is just establishing how much this is going to cost for that that piece. So if we go to that firm and we find out either they have a conflict or, you know, for scheduling purposes, they can't get to it as fast as we want, then we go to number two on the list, and so on. And so that just gives us the flexibility to do it without having to advertise for engineers every single time we need to do a project. For stormwater reviews, it's the same thing. We have a firm right now that we, if somebody submits stormwater plans, we send it to a firm to review those stormwater plans to make sure it meets the state code and our code. If for some reason, it's the firm who designed it is the same firm that we're using, then we would go down to the next on the list so that we can have a different firm review the work of the firm that submitted it. So the ones that we are recommending under site design and construction management, number one would be Seaman Whiteside, and then Stand Deck, and then Cranston. For stormwater reviews and ordinance drafting assistance, Hudson Gay Bell, DeYoung, Cranston, and then Seaman Whiteside and Associates. For stormwater mapping, project design, and construction management, Seaman Whiteside and Associates and Cranston, and then Hudson Gay Bell and DeYoung. For roadway traffic intersection design, we only have one firm, that Stand Deck, because there's not likely to be a conflict in that situation. And we just felt like that they had more in-house capability to do the traffic intersection designs, whereas the other firms would be outsourcing it. So that's why we only have one there. If for some reason, it doesn't work with them, then we can always advertise for bids and qualifications and select a different firm. So this list is submitted for your approval. If you approve it, then we would review their indefinite delivery contracts, and then you're giving me the authority to sign those contracts.
Jeff, would this remove our ability, though, to completely have estimates on certain projects? And I and I'm just more looking out for for the purpose that we may miss somebody who's going to give us as good of a deal, but a better bang for our buck as far as the town is concerned?
Well, you're looking at professional services, like architectural services, engineering services.
Right.
You look at qualifications.
Right.
And the the way that the the law is written, they can't actually bid against each other. It's not, you can't go for the lowest bidder for that, for obvious reasons. You don't want the lowest bidder building a bridge. So you do qualifications, and then you determine whether or not you can come to terms with that highest qualified firm. If you can't, then you have the ability to go down. And so what would happen is, is we would go to the highest qualified firm, and then if they gave us a work order and it was just an amount that we felt like wasn't appropriate, then we can go to the second one. And so there's still competition, so they they know that there's another one on the line.
Great, okay. Same thing with the roadway. I know we only have one person there, as you mentioned, but that still gives us the ability to go out and solicit bids and and things if we feel like that is not, these aren't the companies we're having to go with. This still would allow us that opportunity to go solicit bids.
Right. So what you're doing here is you're authorizing us to do indefinite delivery contracts. And that means that all the terms are set, and so that we can go to them and get the work orders. And of course, those work orders still have to go through the normal process. If we want to go to somebody else, we can. This doesn't say we can only pick these firms. It just allows us to have already done the selection and go to these firms if it's the interest of the town.
Thank you.
Quick question, how often will will we review these firms, like redo their qualifications?
Yeah, so we typically do about every five years.
Every five?
And what we've asked for them is IDCs with a three-year term and two one-year extensions, so five years.
Okay.
But we can, we can, we can cancel one anytime, but the two-year one-extensions give us cause to review them after three years.
Gotcha, thank you, Jeff.
Any other? Do I have a motion?
Settled, moved.
Settled.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Employer Resolution Addendum State Insurance Benefits Program Regarding Council Coverage, Jeff?
Yes, sir. So in May, the PIBA Board, I'm sorry, in March, the PIBA Board voted to change the definition of an employee that's eligible for insurance coverage in that they required councils to affirm whether or not council members themselves would be counted as employees to be able to receive that coverage. So it was adopted in March, we were notified in May, and we have to give them an answer by July, which is why we're here with you tonight on it. And so all this is, is then affirming the the benefit that you're already receiving to be able to get health insurance through PIBA. A couple of points to note is, this would apply to all council members who, if you, eligibility isn't one council member or another, it doesn't matter if you're getting it now or not. If you are getting it, you will continue to be able to get it. If you aren't getting it, you will still be able to get it if you want to. Conversely, if you decide not to extend this benefit, then nobody can get it, regardless if you're getting it now or not, and this cannot be reversed in the future. If council does exclude to, does decide to exclude council members, currently enrolled council members will be unenrolled. And this is not an open enrollment thing, and so it wouldn't qualify for, it's going to be a non-qualifying event so far for Cobra or extending coverage, that would not be allowed. So the the action in front of you is to adopt the addendum as presented by PIBA to continue to provide insurance benefits to council members.
Jeff, just for the record, one more time, this is not increasing cost on anything, this is continuing as it's always been.
That's correct.
Yes, thank you.
Any other? Since this regards us, I'd like to do a roll call, and Madam Clerk, if you would poll the council and myself.
Oh, can I have a motion, I'm sorry?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Councilman where?
Jay. Aye.
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 Okay, it passes, thank you. All right, old business, there is no old business to be brought before council. Public input would be limited to three minutes, we did not have anybody that signed up. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, no, we're adjourned.
Thank you.